Well, good morning, Lampard County Council and members of the public that are with us. I would ask Mr. Beauchamp to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden. Starting from the top, do we have Councillor Agar?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Atkinson?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Boushee?
Thank you.
Councillor Bradley?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Case?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Cook?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Dennis?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Hand?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Field, alternative member to Councillor Loosely?
President.
Thank you. Councillor McRoberts?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Miller?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Sageman?
President.
Thank you. Councillor Veen?
President.
Thank you. Deputy Warden White?
President.
Thank you. And Warden Marriott?
Present.
Everyone's...
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize the unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I would ask any member of council to declare a pecuniary interest where it may... now or where it may arise during the meeting. Seeing none, I look for a motion to go in camera. Councillor Case and Councillor Hand, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll reconvene open council at 9:30.
Welcome back, everybody. And we'll get started with the open session with a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. I'd ask Mr. Beauchamp to rise and report from the in-camera session.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I can report that County Council met in camera this morning for three minutes to approve the Lampton County Council closed session minutes dated May 3 of 2023 and to approve the Committee AM in-camera minutes dated May 17 of 2023.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, delegations. I'd look for a motion to allow presenters to approach the rail moved by Councillor Ferguson and seconded by Councillor Dennis. All in favor? That's carried. Our first delegation is Kate Burns Gallagher, Executive Director, Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. Would like to discuss the 2023 WOWC priorities. Welcome, Kate.
Good morning, Warden. Through you to County Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. As the Warden mentioned, my name is Kate Burns Gallagher. I'm the Executive Director of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and I only say that once because it's way too many words all bunched together. It's a pleasure to be here this morning in Lampton County. We won't tell everybody else, but definitely one of my top favorite counties of the caucus. So today, we are here to introduce our 2023-2024 priorities. And for those council members who are new, give you a little bit of history of the caucus and why we exist. And for those councillors who have been around the table for a little while, it's a bit of a refresher as well. So who are we? We are the 16, and just recently 16, Haldeman County has agreed to try us on for size for this year, and then we'll be reviewing our membership with us this budget season. So we are the 16 upper and single-tier municipalities in Western Ontario. We comprise over 300 municipalities, or communities, sorry, more than 1.5 million residents, so that's 20% of the population of Ontario, half a million square kilometres. And the real piece, or the clue that binds us all together, is that we are 90% rural. And a fun little animation there is when you take our whole region on the map and you turn it sideways, we are really strong elephant. I hail from St. Thomas, so of course, I identify really well with elephants and jumbo. And then we have Owen Sound, and we send our condolences. Yeah. So the purpose of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is really to speak with one voice. There's so much power when we combine the 16 counties together. You saw that elephant, and there's so much power in the region. And we're a big region with lots of diversity, from community to community even, not just from county to county. But there are so many things that are similar in our region, and that's where the Wardens Caucus comes together, to really advocate to the upper levels of government, to be that conduit from the counties to the provincial and federal governments on those issues that affect all of us across the region of Western Ontario. So we really look at those big issues. And how do we do that? How do we operate? So we have the caucus where you are well represented by Warden Marriott, who's a strong advocate and great voice at both the federal and provincial tables. Then we have our CAOs table, and you're represented by Stephane, and prior to Stephane Ron, who was one of the original signing authorities of the caucus as well. And then a great staff team, a full-time executive director, a part-time manager of government relations, and a part-time admin coordinator. And from all of that, our caucus staff and CAOs, we are supported by your staff and the subject matter experts. So we have an economic development committee that's comprised of elected officials, ministry representatives, community partners, as well as economic development staff. And they really take the economic development strategy and drive that forward. And then we have our subject matter expert groups. So we have our planning team that has been eyeball-deep in looking at the proposed changes to the provincial planning statement, and Jason's being representative there. Our social services team, where you have Valerie, and they are a phenomenal group working on our priorities there. Our communications team, represented by Lisa, so helping us get the word out about Lampton on the regional level and about the region in Talampton. And last but not least, our economic development team. And that's where Karen Richards from the economic development partnership is your representative there. So how do we do all of our advocacy? Well, we meet with ministers. Just two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to meet with Minister Thompson and Parliamentary Assistant Wright to talk about those proposed changes, specifically the three-lot severances when it comes to the proposed provincial planning statement. So we met with Minister Thompson, had her time for an hour to talk about that. We also had, on April 14, a meeting with the regional members of parliament and members of provincial parliament, where we introduced our strategic priorities. So we gave them the first look, a first glance, sneak peek at our strategic priorities, because those members of parliament and members of provincial parliament are representing the same constituents as all of you and the same taxpayers. So those individuals are our advocates too, both at Queen's Park and on the Hill. So we want to make sure that our MPs and MPPs are also really well aware of our strategic priorities. Then there's the traditional methods of letter writing, press releases, pre-budget submissions, all the fun government writing. And then we also have really great support networks with SWIFT, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, FCM, so the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. So diving into our priorities, not surprising, I'm sure, for around this table is housing. So as we know, the cost of housing continues to increase in our region, Ontario and Canada as a whole. So we're taking a different approach to our asks of both the provincial and federal government. We're being very specific in our asks this year. So first up, we are asking the provincial government of what they mean when they say they intend to keep municipalities whole. Last year, with the introduction of Bill 97 and taking away development charges, the Minister Clarke said that they intend to keep municipalities whole. We want to know what that means. Define that for us. And secondly, we know in the region, we need 174,000 homes built by 2041, housing units, my apologies, housing units, by 2041, to meet the growing demand in our region. And that was before any of those EV battery announcements as well. So there'll be a bit more housing units we'll require. And so we know how many we need, but the province is also dictating to many municipalities how many homes need to be built. Those 29 fastest and largest-growing cities have been told how many housing units they have to build. So we want to make sure that we are matching the needs that the province is expecting of us. And on the federal side, there's a Housing Accelerator Fund, and right now, the rural cutoff is 10,000, a population of 10,000. So we're advocating to the federal government to take that back up to 100,000, that always has been, so that all of our communities can apply as rural communities to the Housing Accelerator Fund federally. Secondly, is workforce development, or workforce to support economic growth. And this is where we're really focusing on the Ontario Immigrant Nominee Program. This is where people are nominated to come into Ontario based on specific occupations. And month after month, since January of this year, retail continues to be the top occupation that's posted in our region. We know retail is a huge need. I was just looking at our data yesterday and prepping for some, a meeting with the Deputy Minister next week. And we also know that transport truck drivers and bus drivers are also really needed, but that's not included in the occupations list for Ontario Immigrant Nominee Program. So these are some specific asks that we are talking to the ministry folks, as well as the ministers about. And our third priority is mental health addictions and homelessness. This is something that is new for our caucus, particularly the homelessness piece, but it's something that's new to our rural communities, or more visible, if you will. And so our specific asks here are for the mobile crisis response teams for both the Ontario Provincial Police and city police forces, in some cases, our rural communities do have separate police forces, to make the mobile crisis response team funding permanent, so that March 31 every year, our police forces aren't wondering if they are able to partner a mental health support worker with an officer going out to call, mental health calls. We want to make sure that this funding is permanent. And secondly, when it comes to homelessness prevention program, we want to make sure that there's a rural stream. We're not saying take any money away from our urban partners, but homelessness in rural communities looks different. It's couch surfing. It's living out of your car. So how can we support homelessness in our rural communities? So ensuring that there's a rural stream for our homelessness prevention. So those are our asks of our priorities, and those are our three showcase priorities. Now, we continue to have our work that we work on every single day, economic development being one, and that's the work that our committee works on, I guess. And so they continue to work on the strategic plan. Next, on the 16th, we'll be looking at developing a strategic plan for that group. They're just starting to get back together with a new chair, and we'll be setting the direction for that committee and that work in the next couple of weeks. As well, I should mention SWIFT. We continue to support SWIFT and the great work there. And the fiber in the ground projects will be wrapping up this fall, but SWIFT will continue for the next seven years to monitor, to make sure that there's, that 50-10 connection is maintained for all the projects that were done through SWIFT. So we're excited to make sure that that continues. There's a small sampling of our regional partners. Community Futures Western Ontario is a huge partner in our economic development efforts, and you can see everybody else around the table there. Some resources, if you're interested in learning more, we have our website, newsletters and press releases. We're still on Twitter for the time being, as well as Facebook. And then the benefits of your membership. You have a seat at the regional table when you're a member of the Wardens Caucus. And you also have the opportunity to advocate to the provincial and federal governments. You also have the staff support through the subject matter expert teams. We like to say it's that group for R and D, the robbing and duplicating. Don't reinvent that wheel, just make it run a little bit smoother. And also the opportunity to tap into those regional projects, such as ConnectOn, which is a mapping tool of all of our agricultural and manufacturing assets. And right now, we're working on the Regional Housing Information System, or sorry, Rural Housing Information System, which is mapping all of our housing assets. So in a nutshell, in quick 10 minutes, that is the Wardens Caucus for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Kate. I'd just like to echo her comments. You know, I've never sat on a board that has more respect in Ontario than this caucus and by the provincial government. So there's something in powers and numbers. So any questions for Kate? Deputy Warden White, please.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for being here this morning. Just curious as to how those conversations come about with provincial members specifically? Are you bringing them to your office? Are you having meetings only at conferences? Or how do you engage in those upper or higher? What's the politically correct term now? We were told at FCM, it's not a higher level of government anymore. A different order of government. Thank you.
Through you, Warden, to the deputy Warden. So a great example was just two weeks ago there, where we met with Minister Thompson. We reached out through her staff to get that meeting, because we knew that the PPS and the changes to the three-lot severance was a huge issue, and we needed to get on that radar and raise the flag about the issues, specifically in Western Ontario, because we are the heart of the farmland in Ontario, definitely. So we reached out and got that meeting. We are meeting at AMO and Roma. And then we also meet with the deputy ministers and assistant deputy ministers. So ahead of AMO and Roma, we meet with the staff, ADMs and DMs, to let them know what we're going in with the asks, to make sure our asks are working and fit the strategic plans of the ministries and the visions of the ministers. So we have the two-pronged approach of going to both the political side as well as the staff side, and we find we're having some great success with that over the past two years.
Thank you, Kate. Any other questions? Councillor Bradley, please.
Thank you too for your presentation. I noticed throughout your presentation, you talk about rural communities. What about us farmers in the urban cities? What do you do for us?
Any questions? As you mentioned, I just like to know we are a large city. But it talks about, sorry, it talks about rural.
Got to be other, sorry, there's got to be other communities of larger sizes. But how do you define rural? And then where do the urban cities fit in there, even though we do have our own urban, you know, caucuses and those type of things? Because I think there's a good compliment. There's the Warden said, there's strength, and this group has really become strong in the last number of years, and I compliment you for that.
Oh, thank you, Warden. Through you to Councillor Bradley. Definitely, we have some larger communities, such as Sarnia, in our region. I think Sarnia is our largest urban centre in the region. I do believe it is. And I like to say, coming from St. Thomas and Elgin County as my background, right, it's, you can't have one without the other. They're the donut and the timber, right? They go together. And so what happens in our urban centres also affects our rural, and what happens in rural affects urban. So we really need to work together. And so Sarnia, as a part of Lampton County, is a member. And I think Sarnia being on the smaller side of the larger urban gets encapsulated in the work that we do, most definitely. But we work quite closely with the Ontario Big City Mayors. They also have an executive director, and as well as the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. So all three of us meet quite regularly to make sure we're connecting the dots and partnering where we need to. And we're quite closely aligned with the Ontario Big City Mayors and the work that they are doing, and especially on health and homelessness.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it's been said in this chamber, unfortunately, the focus has been on the urban centres on the homeless issue. And as a number of people here have testified, it's much beyond that now. And so a lot more, you can get that voice, the message across to the other levels of government. It's very important right now.
I would also add that I believe some of the work that they did in the government came through without extra money this spring for homelessness. Sarnia would benefit as much or more than rural Lampton. Councillor Dennis.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. The young lady referred to big city mayors to be part of that club. It's 100,000 people, am I correct? And that club has grown quite a bit over the last few years. At one time, it was a very, very exclusive club. It's not so exclusive as much as it once was, am I correct?
Through you, Warden, to Councillor Dennis. Correct, yes. So from our membership, our 16 counties, actually, Chatham-Kent is a member of the Ontario Big City Mayors, because they are at 102,000 population. So yes, Ontario Big City Mayors has grown quite significantly, population-based.
In order to get, to sit at the adults' table, you need 100,000 people, and if you are still sitting at the children's table, you're below that, obviously. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Kate? Seeing none, thank you again, Kate, for making the drive this morning. Our second delegation is Marilyn Gifford. Would like to speak to County Council to create public awareness that we have an abundance of doctors seeking residency programs, and that more residency programs are needed to solve the doctor shortage. Welcome, Marilyn.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone, everyone for having me here today. It means a lot and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Thank each and every one of you. My name is Marilyn Gifford. I was born in Petrolia, Ontario at CEE Hospital. I went to LCCVI with a few people here. I was a hard oiler. I'm married to Martin Gifford of Petrolia Fallow for 51 years. So far, he's still the love of my life. Most days. My goal today to, in speaking to you is to try to create a public awareness that there is no doctor shortage. There is no doctor shortage despite what you're thinking. There is not. But there is a residency shortage and that's the key issue here. I hope today that you will embrace the idea and try to create a pilot program here in Sarnia-Lampton for more residency programs so that we can train our own doctors here. If we could manage to obtain as little as three residents, three, in five years, for five years, in six years, we will have 15 new doctors. And that's with as little as three. I would also like to mention, this is kind of a, a good thing, in the recent budget by the Ford Government, they have released that they are going to, um, make room for 50 IMGs in Ontario here immediately, immediately. And I believe it's Western that is to get 28. So time is of the essence. Again, there's no doctor shortage, there's a residency shortage. I truly believe with all my heart that this is a community issue. It is a political issue, but I think as a community, we have to come together to make this happen. It is projected that one out of three citizens here in Lampton County will not have a family doctor in as little as three to five years. That comes to 41,000. I do think that that number is a little bit depleted or underflated, um, because of all the newcomers in the area and the timing of the census. Did you know that we are underserved medically here in Sarnia-Lampton? We are underserved. To me, that's Nunavik. That's not Sarnia-Lampton. We need more doctors, absolutely. Locally, the saving grace is we have an abundance of fully qualified Canadian medical graduates here now looking for residencies, hoping to find one here. But they can't because there's government red tape and barriers. I'm asking to cut those. Our local crisis has such a simple solution. Again, we just need to be able to train our own. If we could be granted some more residency positions in a pilot program, we could set the stage for the rest of Ontario. What they managed to create in Petrolia at the Central Family Health Center is absolutely amazing with medical care, absolutely amazing. But our doctors as a whole are overworked, exhausted and overwhelmed. Again, the answer to this crisis is very simple. The clearest path to solving our current doctor shortage would be to open more residency programs, hopefully through a pilot program. You might want to know what these little fellows are here. These are my dog's toys and I don't, I just can't figure out a better way to explain this to, to you. How the, how an IMG becomes an IMG, okay? There are tons and abundance of Canadian IMGs here in Lampton County, okay? So, okay, so one of our kids, family, friends, neighbors, whatever, they want to be a doctor. They apply to medical school. There are 17 medical schools in Canada, 17. McMaster, I will use as, as an example. On an average basis, McMaster will have 6,000 applicants for medical seating. 6,000. Do you know how many they take? I'm just like, it's either 203 or 223. That's all that they take. What happens to the other 5,700 plus? They come home and they'll think about it, they'll, if their passion is truly to be a doctor and they want this with all their heart, they will try to find the funding and they will go what we call now offshore. They can go to Ireland, we all know doctors from Ireland. They can go to the Caribbean, there's Australia, and there's a few more places, okay? So they spend their own money and they get their education there, their medical schooling there, and they come back to Canada, hoping to get a placement here in Ontario. But the kicker is, when they come back to Ontario or Canada, they have to write our Canadian medical exams and they actually have to pass at a higher standard than the fellows that went to McMaster. These are the McMaster boys for you. Okay, so they have to pass these exams at a higher standard. And if they're lucky and if they get it, they can then apply for Canadian residency here in Ontario. Last year, 1,800 offshore-trained medical graduates qualified for a Canadian residency here in Ontario. Last year, in all of Cana, oh, I'm sorry, 1,800 in all of Canada. Last year, the, these are the ones that were trained at McMaster and Canadian universities. There was 3,071. 3,070 found a residency here in Canada. I honestly don't know what happened to the other fellow. Out of the 1,800 here that are fully Canadian, fully trained, fully qualified, out of the 1,800, they only took 342. And that was a high number. What's going to happen to the rest of these fellows? While they either hang around for a year and work minimum wage jobs, and I know some that are doing that right now, or they head across the border where they are welcomed with open arms. Last year, 1,485 IMGs found a residency in New York alone. We are underserved. We need these doctors. The other little surprise thing is, out of these 3,070 that did get a residency here in Canada, 266 said, "No, I don't want it." I don't know where they went, honestly, I don't, I kind of think they went across the border or maybe they were holding out for a better residency. But 266 this year alone said, "No." What happens? Those residencies go empty, totally empty. These fellows, the Canadian medical graduates from offshore, are not allowed to access those. That's wrong. That's wrong. We're hurting. Our citizens are dying. There is a little saying that goes around, I have a few acquaintances that have been offshore, and what's going on in the universities there is they're actually saying to each other, "Don't even try to come back to Ontario. They have a chokehold on you." Barriers and the red tape, just go right to the states. We are losing our families, our sons, our daughters, our citizens. As a mother, I wouldn't want to lose my son. You know, I know of other mothers whose sons have been across the border working and it just changes. They lose their boys at like 18 because they start to go to university, right? They get their BA and then they go offshore and then they set up a house over there and we need them here. Again, I don't think one person can change this. I don't. But I think as a community, if we raise our voices and we make our voices heard, we can solve this problem. I wrote a letter to Bob Bailey for my birthday in October, um, about the residency issue and he responded back that he was taking my letter directly to the Minister of Health. Since then, I have thought about it and the idea came up at a different meeting about a pilot program. So I have written him, what's in the clock? I, I have written him again and I've received correspondence last week saying that he's working on it. But then a paragraph below basically gave me cause to think that he's really not too rushed about it. I feel we have 41,000 reasons to be rushed about it. I think we need to take action and I think we need to do it now. In closing, I'd just like to ask you all to look to your left and to look to your right. One of you will not have a family doctor in as little as three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Do we have any questions? Counselor Bradley.
Thank you for your advocacy. It's, it's truly grassroots. And that's what's so magic about what's been going on for the last six months. So then the question is, what is the ask? Would you like to, to endorse your effort to the provincial government? Is that what you'd like us to do today?
Um, Counselor, thank you, thank you. I, I didn't really understand about the ask, but in my, in my dream of dreams, I would hope that each of you would promote and endorse this idea of a pilot program so that with your respective positions, if you would do this, hopefully we could make this happen. I...
I was waiting. More than willing to move a motion that Lampton County Council endorses your initiative, which, um, has been again, six or eight months of real strong grassroots advocacy. And I believe the MPP has been supportive. So I think it's important that we as a public body say, yes, we believe this is the direction that the government should look at for the very immediate future.
Okay, and that's seconded by Counselor Case. And then we also have Counselor Hand, had her hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Hand.
Sorry, thank you for your time and I appreciate your passion for the subject. Um, I just wanted to let you know that, um, the Physicians Recruitment Task Force has just hired two new doctors for Sarnia-Lampton and they are collecting names, um, for anybody that's requiring a doctor. So we continue to support that activity and they have been successful in bringing doctors locally. Um, and there's just, as I say, there's two new ones coming on board shortly. Also, I'm on the board at Blue Water Health and I can tell you that this is a deep concern for the board and they are doing a lot of work through Dr. Haddad on residency programs and they continue to recruit doctors. It's a tough go because you're recruiting for the needs of everybody else as well, but they have successfully been able to bring new doctors to Sarnia. I mean, again, that's at the hospital, but we need them as well. So, um, there is a lot of appreciation for the difficulty and there's work going on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
Thank, thank you very much and I, I, you know what, what the Ontario Task Force has done and the recruitment people, it's an amazing, amazing. But the fact is, we're still underserved. And if we could open up a new pathway to grab our doctors, it would be only to assist and to aid in what you're already doing. Absolutely. I agree with that.
Okay, Deputy Warden White.
Uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Gifford. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Just wanted to lend my voice to you as well. Uh, you know, from my own family's perspective, we've gone without a family physician for, uh, about two years at this point as well. So thankfully, I think that's going to be resolved shortly, thanks to Petrolia. We are, uh, you know, a, a family with high needs, uh, and as the father of somebody with disabilities, there was probably no greater fear than wondering if and whenever, uh, my own children would have the care that they need, uh, moving forward. Uh, and to the point earlier, I know we've basically been treading water in the community. The Physicians Recruitment Task Force has done a great job in filling the existing, uh, patient lists of retiring doctors. Uh, and I do understand that they're finally able to start getting, uh, slightly ahead of that, uh, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. There is a significant challenge here that many families face and just from day-to-day healthcare, uh, needs, it's a very, very frightening situation to be in. So anything that we can do to help, I'm certainly more than willing to, uh, support.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that, Marilyn?
Thank, thank you so much. I truly understand what you're saying. I think right now we are down 12 and a half doctors. I'm not sure on that because of what, um, Counselor Hand has just said. Um, I, I took it upon myself to do a little petition and I walked it. I did it online, but people don't want to put their name and address online. So by, I have close to 1,000 signatures. Um, I have talked to at least 700 people myself and it's devastating, um, down there. Like a lot of down there, I, I go to the waterfront and to grocery store parking lots and the stories are horrendous. People like you without a doctor, it's a very scary thing, um, especially if we have something that needs to be monitored. Walk-in clinics are very helpful, but in an instant, not in long-term. And thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bradley.
Just going to ask that if this motion passes, that it be sent down to all the other mayors and councils so that they then can support this if they so desire at the local level? I think that would save you doing all the, going to each council and making that effort. So I'm just asking if that could be done.
Thank you. Is there any other, uh, Counselor Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, for the benefit of this council, for the benefit of the folks in the gallery and the media, uh, do you happen to know locally the average age of doctor, uh, doctors in this community? And do you happen to know how many people, uh, do not have a doctor themselves in this community, uh, Sarnia-Lampton?
A, a, a break.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I think the... A few years ago, I, I read a report in the Sarnia Observer that says 75,000 people were without a family doctor. But then you, you kind of look and you go back and, and, and I think 2019, they said they expected about 41,000 would not have a family doctor. And I think that has increased because of the resident, or because of the retirements coming up. I do know that when I've talked to an awful lot of these people, people are terrified that their doctor is going to retire and that even though they're seated as a doctor in Lampton County, like they're, they're working, their work hours are like half an hour a day or a half and, half a day a week. And, um, they're trying so hard to, to keep up. I, I can't imagine the pressure. There is a great need, absolutely. People are terrified. There's horror stories in this back of chair. It's just awful.
We're shaped in others.
Um, I, I'm, I'm a housewife. I'm doing the, the very best I can, but to compare it to other ones, I, I really can't say. I, I know Toronto is really in a mess, but I really think if we could get a pilot program and train our owns, like, I, I snuck into shoppers at, at Northgate because I got tired of the parking lot and I approached a couple of guys on a ladder and I asked them if they, you know, would sign my petition if they knew about it, you know? And they were doctors, they're hoping for a residency. They're hoping for one here in, at, um, Dr. Butler's at, um, Family Health Center. They have families here, they want to settle here, they're doctors, they're qualified, but there's just no seats. If we had those, right there, we've got two. And then I ran into another fellow quite by surprise and he said, "Hey, are you doing this?" And I said, "Yeah, you know, I'm trying to do something." And he says, "I want to be a psychiatrist. I want to be a psychiatrist here." And then since then, like there's, there's one waiting for a residency and she's working at Valley Village. Like the doctors are here, they just need the two-year program for specialties, of course, much more. But then I even found a, a doctor that said he would be, I don't understand the language, doctor language, but he said he would be a precipitor if we managed to get a psychiatric program going. Uh, he's a psychiatrist, like, there is help out there. Yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through to our presenter. I'd like to say, I've sat here for an awful lot of years in this council chamber and yours today is one of the most heartfelt presentations I've ever seen. So thank you very much for coming. It's a real issue that, I mean, we're struggling with, with different levels of government and so on. What I wanted to say, thank you very much for coming here today and bringing this forward. This is where things really do start. And, uh, again, one of the, one of the best presentations I've ever seen because it's come from your heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Case.
Thank you so much. No idea. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you again, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Oh, it's awful.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, minutes of open session council of May the 3rd. Do we have a motion to receive, adopt? Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bean, all in favor. Let's carry it. Item number 10, correspondents to receive and file. We have, uh, two items. Look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Cook and Counselor Atkinson, all in favor. Let's carry it. Item number 11, Board of Health. Uh, today we have a spot at the front for Dr. Duick, who will be joining us up here from now on to give her, uh, to receive questions if needed. And welcome, Dr. Duick.
Thank you.
So we have, um, seven, seven, seven items and... So we have seven items in the correspondence. Look for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Bean and Counselor Field. Any discussion? All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you. Item B, information reports. We have, if we could have a motion to receive and file these four items. Counselor Hand and Counselor McRoberts, all in favor. Let's carry it. And item number 12, information reports. Social Services Division. I would look for a motion. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Miller, all in, Counselor White, or sorry, Deputy Warden White, please.
Thank you, Warden Mary. I have a question through staff regarding a couple of these points made here. How quickly are you going to assess the effectiveness of the hub, the hours, whether or not the service is being provided, fit, and considering opportunities to shift the hours, given that services in the community are not located adjacent to this particular site, and folks would need time to travel back and forth to other services in the community, such as shelters and food banks and the soup, or the lunch programs, and having to travel around with a lot of stuff? So how are you going to assess that? What's the timeline and maybe potentially making any adjustments if needed?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Certainly. Through you, Warden Mary, out to Counselor White. The pilot program will stay open until March of next year, but we anticipate making adjustments as we go along. If we're finding that there are individuals coming in wanting services that we're not providing, we'll look to see if we can provide those. If we're providing services that aren't being requested, we'll eliminate those. So it'll be an ongoing evaluation. As for the location, again, it is a temporary location. We have it only till March of next year, and then we'll be evaluating, was the program successful? If it was, do we need to look for a permanent location, which would involve quite, you know, community consultations, those types of things? So that will take some time. As for people traveling, we will be providing them with bus tickets so that they can get to the end of the Good Shepherd for the lunch program, that they can get back to the Good Shepherd's Lodge, where the Haven, or wherever they may be staying. So we will be providing free bus tickets for individuals to travel.
Counselor McRoberts.
Thank you, through the warden. So the bus tickets, if we can just stick on that subject for a second, for those with a lot of luggage and the carts, that's not going to help them get there, but I do appreciate that the bus tickets are coming out. I do have a question to carry on for Counselor White, sorry, Deputy Warden White. When you start shifting hours, or if that happens, are you going to send out details just so we can, those that work with the outreach or work with different programs, we're going to let them know that that has changed because that's the only way to get these folks to know that it exists? Just because they do have to get back and forth to where the meals are being served. I have another question. At this site, it says there's going to be access to mental health and healthcare professionals. Is the West Lampton group going to be a part of that? Is that something that's coming out to help with medical? And the bus that's supposed to be out, is that out yet, or is that coming for medical?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor McRoberts. I can't speak to the mobile bus. That's being managed through Canadian Mental Health Association and Blue Water Health. So certainly I could try to find out some of those details and share that with you at a later time. So at this point, the bus isn't coming to the shelter, the outreach bus, to the hub. We'll have to find out. I don't believe they've started yet, so we'll have to do a little more research on that. We're hoping to have the community paramedics available at certain times at the location. We're also working closely with the North Lampton Health Team. They have a nurse practitioner that will be joining us, and I believe has been there already this week. I will have to follow up with you if the West Lampton group will be there as well. So again, we have a number of community partners who are there to address those needs.
Follow-up, Counselor McRoberts.
Great, and a follow-up question. Is there any AC being provided in that building because it is pretty toasty? I had a few folks that were in there last week, and it was hot. Do we plan on having AC? Are we just leasing this property, or is it being donated to us for the term that we're in there? Because it would be great to double that as a cooling station. It's stifling hot in a church. We've all been in a church at one point in our lives, and when it's 32 degrees out as a drop-in spot, you don't even want to drop in because brutally hot inside. And last question, not necessarily on this. There was an article, congratulations on the award that you received, and it had a number of 230 people that have been housed. Are they still housed? Do we have any kind of data where we can make reference to that as we shift? Some are coming along, and where's the data, just to know where we stand with those 230 people that have been housed?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Sure, through you, Warden, to Counselor McRoberts. Before I move on to these, I failed to answer one of the questions, the previous questions you asked about shifting hours. If and when we shift hours, yes, we would do another media release, or it will be available on our website. And there really is a network of individuals through the homeless population and through the various outreach workers. We would reach out to them. Most of the group knew we were opening Monday, you know, even prior to being open. That network sort of is informal and out there. So through there, we would be able to do that. We leased the property. We have the property leased until March 2024. My understanding is they're hoping to use that property with another non-problem agency to turn it into affordable housing, so, which is a positive story. So we'll have more to come on that. It's not a county project at this time, but it's being explored. So we would be looking for a different location, and we used that location because it was our out-of-the-cold location. As for air conditioning, we're not going to be installing full air conditioning because it is leased and it will be torn down, so the cost would be extremely prohibitive. But we will be putting in window air conditioners, fans, looking at solutions to do that, and I believe fans are there now, but also looking at some window air conditioners where we can. And you wondered about the 230 individuals that we housed during COVID and afterwards, and do they remain housed? We'll have to get you that information. Actually, at June's committee, we are doing a report and update on our Housing and Homeless Plan. We do an annual update, and we would be able to provide that information. I believe it is part of that update, and if not, we can have it included, just because the timeframes are different. That update is specifically for 2022. What I can tell you is I believe the majority of those individuals have remained housed, and they've remained housed because we've provided them with Tennessee supports, issues that they might need through either Canadian Mental Health Association or through County of Lampton staff.
First, I have Counselor Bradley, and then Counselor Dennis.
Certainly supportive of the concept. I didn't see the city of Sarnia listed in the consultation or the neighborhood. And I'm just sitting here now with a large, lengthy complaint from the neighborhood, which I think you're aware of, and I understand that does happen. But what outreach is going into that neighborhood? So they understand fully what's happening there, and some of the, as you know, rumors feed on rumors. So is there going to be outreach to that immediate neighborhood on Melrose, the businesses on X-Mouth who have been raising these issues, so that at least we can try to diminish some of the fire coming in?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Certainly. Through you, Warden Mary, out to Counselor Bradley. Yes, we have our communication plan is three-pronged. This report's going to council this morning. A media release is going out, and we'll be delivering flyers to the immediate neighbors this afternoon as well. I believe this afternoon or tomorrow morning, we wanted to make sure this report got in front of council, but we'll be doing it at the same time, and the end of the Good Shepherd will be assisting us with that communication as well, since they're very involved in the location.
Counselor Dennis.
Thank you very much. At the end of the day, does the county have a plan to make these people eventually productive members of society? Being addicted to government handouts can be as, I don't want to sound dramatic here, but it's almost, you know, no one wants to be, I shouldn't say no one, but at the end of the day, getting someone addicted to government handouts is almost as bad as making them rely on other forms. You know, there's some value in getting up early in the morning and going to a job and making a living and having some self-worth. You know, we're all generous people, we're all empathetic, but at the end of the day, life comes down to decisions, and it comes down to choices. And yes, sure, people have been dealt a bad hand. The cost of living is ridiculous. There's been some horrible decisions made by all levels of government, and you have people who've suffered, but there's some people we know that take advantage of the system and so on. But at the end of the day, you know, it doesn't do anyone any good to take care of them from the griddle to the grave. And, you know, it costs taxpayers an awful lot of money. People that have played by the rules, that have worked hard, that have done all the right things, it's not fair to them, and, you know.
Okay, Counselor Dennis, you had a question, I believe.
So my question is, is, are we just going to take care of these people and hope that they turn their lives around, or are we leading them to get their lives back on track?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Warden Mary, out to Counselor Dennis. That's a very challenging question to answer. I mean, certainly, the county offers a number of programs that provide assistance, including Ontario Works, as well as our homeless prevention programs, and we provide supports for those individuals in receipt of those programs. But people really have to want to take advantage of the programs offered to them. At the end of the day, we can't make people do anything. We try to encourage, and I've spoken about that before, build trust with individuals, encourage them to utilize our programs. We have many, many individuals in receipt of Ontario Works who are working and who are going to school and working on various programs to become employed. So we have a whole gamut of programs, but all we really can do is encourage individuals to take advantage of the supports available to them.
Counselor McRoberts, please.
I have one last question. Did we ever receive a homelessness, the homelessness summit report? Did that ever come in?
Ms. Colasani.
Through you, Warden Mary, out to Counselor McRoberts. That report will be coming also to the June Committee, and then it'll come to council after that. So that fulsome report, including the consultant's report, will be available at committee.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Did we want to clarify that? Mr. Tiffo, please? Or Mr. Bolsho?
Sure. The motion is to receive and file the report, and the mover's Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counsel Miller.
Counsel Bradley.
On a procedural question, is that the right thing to do to receive and file it instead of endorsing it? I'm just asking because this issue is, as I said, of the neighborhood, and it is growing. So I think it's important we also say that we support the initiative that's going on there, instead of just receiving and filing. That, to me, means nothing.
Okay, good point. We'll change that. Counselor McRoberts is okay with that? Okay? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Mover was Counsel Ferguson and Counsel Miller. So mover and seconder are good with that. So, yeah, all in favor of that? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thanks. Item number 13, items not requiring a motion, is a report, this committee minutes, sorry, from the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to receive and file that? Counsel Cook and Counsel Sagman, all in favor. That's carried. Number 14, reports requiring a motion from Finance Facilities and Court Services Division. I would, Counsel Miller, please. It moves the recommendation. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Agar. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thanks. It brings us to item 15, committee minutes. I would ask Counselor Bean, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, the AM Committee met on May 15th. I present these minutes for your consideration.
Thank you. Under Infrastructure and Development Services Division, motion number one was the report from the Infrastructure and Development. Motion number two was under reports requiring a motion on the County Official Plan Comprehensive Review. And under Cultural Services Division, motion number three was dealing with the information reports for cultural services. Under reports requiring a motion, motion number four regarding library donations. And number five was regarding museums, galleries, and archives collections management report. And item number six was in camera, as well as number seven. And number eight was to go back and to open, and number nine was adjournment. Counsel Bean, sorry, Counsel Bean, please.
I move the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Dennis. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. PM committee minutes? I'd call on Counsel Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Warden Mary. I do present the PM committee minutes.
Thank you. Motion number one, under Long Term Care Division, was information reports on long-term care. Motion number two, under reports requiring a motion regarding the amendment to 2023 services and fees schedules for the, to increase building inspection and by law enforcement fees. And item number three, under Finance Facilities and Court Services Division, information reports received and filed. And motion number four, under Social Services, on information reports. Number five, reports requiring a motion under Housing Services Department. And number six was adjournment. Counsel Ferguson, please.
I would so move the PM committee minutes.
Seconded by Counsel Miller. All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you. Brings us to 16. There are no items tabled from previous meetings. And item number 17, is a notice of motion, but Counsel Bushy gave notice of motion on May 29th. Counsel Bushy.
Mr. Warden, given that our two county council meetings are half of a council, I believe we should consider joining together with council, the same as today, and meet once a month as a whole county council on trial basis. Joining one county council will save council time and save staff report and staff time.
Okay. Counselor Dennis, you'll second that motion? Okay, discussion. That was moved by Counsel Bushy, seconded by Counsel Dennis. Counsel Hand, please.
During my time on county council, this idea has come forward before. I personally prefer the system that we have because it allows you to work more in-depth when you're on AM, and then you rotate into PM, and you do some of that work behind the scenes, and then it comes forward to county council. I personally find that an effective system.
Thank you. Any other? Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Warden. I don't see where it's going to save staff time on reports. The managers from the different departments give one report into the committee that they're responsible to, and that's all there is. There is no saving of staff time.
Thank you. Any other question? Counsel Case.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through to you. Years and years ago, we looked at committee of the whole for the committee structure. I brought the motion forward probably, I don't know, it was probably 10 or 12 years ago. We tried, and it really didn't work, but we still had the committee. We tried it, it really didn't work, but we still had the committee structure and we still had our council meeting that was separate from that. I think about the connectivity and working together with the staff folks and everybody else. Going to one meeting, I think, takes a little of that out of the equation for us. So I'm not going to support the motion either. I do think that the two meetings are needed. I would definitely support a committee of the whole structure when it comes to the committee meetings, but that's how I feel. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If we're ready to vote, I'll call the vote. Okay. Requested, recorded vote by Councillor Bradley. Mr. Beauchamp, please.
Let me start with Councillor McRoberts. Thank you, Warden Marriott. It has been moved by Councillor Bucci and seconded by Councillor Dennis that... Councillor Bucci's notice of motion dated May 29th, 2023, for the June 7th, 2023 Lampton County Council meeting, his motion to condense the two county council committees to a single meeting once a month for the whole county council on a trial basis. A recorded vote has been requested by Councillor Bradley and we will start the vote with Councillor McRoberts. Okay, I'm just wondering, so you're going to register there? Do you start with Councillor McRoberts? There's the day we're in, there's the sky. Councillor Miller? Councillor Sagman? Councillor Veen?
No.
No. Deputy Warden White?
No.
A no. Councillor Agar?
No.
A no. Councillor Atkinson?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Bucci?
Yes, yes, I have a yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Broad?
No.
A no. Councillor Case?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Cook?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Dennis?
Yes.
I have a yes. Councillor Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Hand?
No.
I have a no. Councillor Field?
And a no. The motion is defeated. Thank you. That brings us to item number 18, other business. Councillor Atkinson.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Good to my fellow councillors and staff and those that are joining us and attendants and virtually, as many of you are aware, Councillor Ferguson and I are directors with the Lampton Agricultural Hall of Fame. And I'm pleased today to inform you that some of our residents have been nominated and will be inducted into the Lampton Hall of Fame. They are George and Agnes Dickinson, Mr. James Johnson, Dawn and Anne McGugan. This will be done virtually on Friday, June 16th and as well in a in-person session at the Oil Museum in Oil Springs on July 22nd. If you see any of these individuals, I would encourage you to congratulate them and thank them. They've certainly contributed an awful lot to agriculture within our community. If you're interested in joining us virtually, contact either Councillor Ferguson or myself and we'll give you the links for that ceremony. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Councillor Atkinson. Any other, other business? Councillor Case.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you. Just a question. Years ago, we looked at a potential county transit system. Again, I've been away for four years. I don't know where we are on that. Is that something that's been discussed, brought up maybe the last term at council? So I guess I'm asking for some clarification if that's something that was discussed, was looked at, maybe being put into place. I've had some of my residents ask about it. That's why I'm asking today.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cole, do we have, I believe I know the answer to this, but I'll get you to, if you don't mind.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Councillor Case. So quite some time ago, there was a report that was brought back that explored that at the time. There was a pilot project that was being done north of, in Simcoe County or north of Simcoe County, I think, that the report was based on and looked at that, at that program. But at that time, when the report came back, it was, it was not seen to be feasible and nothing else was done towards that. Since that time, some local municipalities have endeavored to operate through the, through the provincial grant system that was set up. So the Huron Shores Network was created, which services Grand Ben Forest, some townships in Huron County, all the way down to Sarnia and into London, I believe. And then the city of Sarnia also partnered with the town of Strathroy in order to provide service from Sarnia to Strathroy to London. So those are the existing ones in the county right now, but nothing further has been done other than those, those ones.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. A follow up, Councillor Case.
Yeah, follow up to you, through you, Mr. Warden, to Mr. Cole. So I know Middlesex County is doing some interesting things with the transit system within that particular county. And I guess I'm wondering if we could maybe perhaps dust off that old report for a future council meeting to be able to have a discussion on potentially looking at this again. I know that a lot of people have chosen to live in the rural area. A lot of people now with an aging population are not driving. So there's some, some issues. A lot of young people, students, maybe traveling to Lampton College, looking for that same transportation. I do know it's an expensive piece of business to get into, but with all these new partnerships that are out there, such as Middlesex, Huron County, Lampton Shores Partnership, I wonder perhaps if maybe we could take a look at that again. So I would make a motion, Mr. Warden, that we bring the old report back and maybe take a look at it and maybe try to broaden that in future discussions.
Is that seconded by Councillor Bradley? And you want to speak as well?
I think I instigated that a number of years ago and it wasn't practical at the time, but times have changed. When there was discussion earlier about the homeless, the number one barrier to employment is transportation, whether it be in the city or it be out in the rest of the county. So I think we need to take a look at it. Infield, I believe, moved to an Uber system, which is, seems to be working. So I think, again, it's time, just to dust up the report and perhaps we can look at some innovation. Because again, we hear it continually. We hear from people in St. Clair wanting to come to Sarnia, vice versa. We hear it out in the county. So why not take another look at it?
Okay, first I have Councillor Ferguson and then Deputy Warden White.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Mr. Case. So with the transportation issue, what I'm reading in the papers too also was that there's housing issues for students and I see that from the paper from Lampton College and Western. Can we get some of the students with buses out to the rural areas where there might be some affordable housing or people who are aging could rent out rooms? And we need to get the new Canadians into the rural areas.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Warden White.
Thank you. And one step beyond that as well, good points all around. I sat in on a session on regional transportation at FCM last week and one of the, I think, more modern approaches to medical care, recognizing the fact that a lot of the necessary care, whether it's cancer treatments or diagnostics, happen in very specific areas, yet there are folks spread out across the province. In this case, it was a northern program, but they had developed what they call the Northern Medical Connection, which is essentially a bus that has a route from community to community. And folks within those communities schedule in partnership with their care providers appointments for those specific days so that there are routes that folks can travel from rural communities at a fairly great distance to receive the medical care that they need. So there are all kinds of innovations out there, I think, that we could learn from through this and I think this is going to be a great exercise. So thank you, Councillor Case, for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I call the vote? All in favor? Opposed, if any? That's unanimous. Councillor Bradley.
Okay, I have a by coincidence or related item. There was a South Western Ontario Transportation Report that a large number of people worked on over the last 18 months to two years. That report was given to Minister Mulrooney about a year to 14 to 16 months ago. And many of the people that participated in the report are no longer actively in public life. So I'm going to ask this county council, we can ask the Minister of Transportation to release the report immediately so the public can see the plans for South Western Ontario on transportation. This is way too long to wait. It involved roads, it involves the border crossings, it involved a number of air. Like we really did a lot of work for 18 months and it's been sitting there for all this time with no response to us. So I think this council should ask this report, which is just related to what we're talking about, to be released so we can have the discussion because the word is, there's a cabinet shuffle coming. And I don't want to wait for another six months to a year to get this report released. It's becoming stale dated because of the inactivity by the government on moving forward on it.
Okay, if that's a motion, do we have a seconder for that, Councillor Case? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Is there any more other business? Seeing none, we move to item number 19, notice of bylaws. Mr. Beauchamp, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It is moved by Councillor Bucci and seconded by Councillor Agar that bylaws 20 through 23 of 2023 as circulated be taken as read a first and a second time.
All in favor? That's carried.
It is moved by Councillor Agar and seconded by Councillor Bucci that bylaws 20 to 23 of 2023 as circulated be taken as being read a third and final time.
All in favor? That's carried. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 5th. And to that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Dennis and... I got too many hands. Councillor Field? All in favor? That's carried. Please join me with O Canada.